Read the call of the special meeting.
Oh, we have to call the order first.
Okay, yeah. So, a call this meeting to order, February tenth, twenty twenty four, at six?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. The reason for the meeting is Nelsonville City Council will meet in a special meeting on Saturday, February tenth, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. The purpose of the meeting is to address ordinances to appoint Matthew Voltoleini as the city's law director and to adopt an ordinance to codify Nelsonville City Council's acceptance of Gary Hunter's settlement offer. And then I will have some remarks. My remarks will be sprinkled throughout the evening. So, if you'll stand, so we can hear the plan.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I would like to address Mr. Blue's email that came out about an hour ago about this meeting being possibly illegal.
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Before we begin, I do want to say some words. I want to thank all of you for coming, taking the time to be here on a Saturday. I know there's probably a hundred other places we'd rather be, but I appreciate you being here. For those who are not aware, out in the community, our city council meetings, committee meetings are always open to the public. They are welcome to come. I encourage them to come and share their thoughts, ideas, comments. And that is a privilege for the citizens of Nelsonville. However, for the non-citizens, I have extended the courtesy to them if they so wish to come and participate in our meetings. Again, they're more than welcome to. Now, I know tonight we were going to do a couple other things. Unfortunately, we're just going to push some of that till Monday because it didn't show up in our notice. So, I think we're down to two things. The other thing I did want to say is that we must have order during these procedures in order for us to be able to conduct city business. So, if your plan is to be disruptive, I ask you respectfully to leave. Additionally, if you do have a comment that you would like us to hear, ideas, thoughts, whatever it might be, please stand where you sit, give us your name and your address, and then proceed to let us know what your thoughts are. Okay? Having said that, I think we can begin with the meeting. I would very much like everyone to meet Mr. Voltoleini.
Madam President, do roll call.
I'm so sorry, so sorry. We're going to do roll call. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Clann?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're all done. So, again, Mr. Matthew Voltoleini has been kind enough to agree to step in for city attorney for a three-month contract. And I will let him, you know, let you know some of his background. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, first, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I've been, I graduated from Ohio State College of Law in nineteen eighty-eight. I've been in practice law since then. Mostly civil litigation, a lot of business law, some criminal law, a little bit of everything, a lot of probate law over the years. Done a lot of business in this area. I represent clients up in Logan, I've been down in Nelsonville, Palmeroy, my mom's from New Lex. I've done a lot of work down there. So, I've done a little bit of everything, and I think I appreciate this opportunity. And I think I'm well-suited for this based on my experience. So, I started in eighty-eight when I was three years old, so I'm sixty-one now. So, I've done a little bit, over my career, I've done a little bit of everything. Yeah. And if anyone has any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them.
Okay, great. Any questions, our citizens? No? Okay, any questions from?
Yes, I would like to, for full disclosure and transparency, about three years ago, I contacted Mr. Voltoleini concerning a personal legal matter. However, I never retained his services. Would that be accurate?
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two and a half years ago, I received a ticket for back in Scott Frank's girlfriend's house car. And I parked Matt, and he did an excellent job knocking it down. So, because of that, I called the Ethics Commission yesterday and asked if I was allowed to participate. And what they told me, as long as it was over and the relationship was severed, or, and I didn't have any business relationships since then, that I was fully capable of participating and voting in the thing. And I think that would go to your question, Greg, that if the relationship is long severed, then you don't, there is no conflict according to. And I have documents that the Ethics Commission sent me stating that, or, and giving examples. So, I just wanted to make that clear and make that plain, that I think it was like two and a half years ago. I really haven't had any conversations with Matt since then. And I, I knew him because Candy Flowers had already become the, to their sport, what name? And that's, that was my full knowledge of it.
Okay.
There's one other thing. I don't currently have any clients in Nelsonville, and I don't have any clients in Hocking County, Ohio, currently.
Okay. And you're aware you can't practice like criminal law?
I'm understanding.
Okay. If there's no other questions?
Actually, so I would like to ask, per the charter, does the city manager recommend the city attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. So, did you contact Mr. Voltoleini?
I did at the request of President Rita Wynn once. I talked with him and discussed with him. She wanted me to send her a, she wanted him to send me an employment offer. And so, that's the process I've got. I've not got to vet him, and I haven't officially, by record, appointed him, but I'm here just to see. Madam President?
Yes, sir?
Section six oh five of the charter allows council to appoint special counsel in place of the city attorney. And I believe that is the way the ordinance is written.
Correct. So, one of the remarks that I wanted to make this evening was to clarify some things that are being said and misrepresented throughout the community. And I wholly encourage everyone out there to go online and look at our charter. It is there for everyone to see. It'll, you'll find it under code, you just have to search through there. So, having said that, I know certain council members and other members of the community have been spreading some rumors, lies actually, that the only person that can hire and fire a city attorney is the city manager. And let me say, to be clear, that is incorrect. According to our charter, and I quote, attorney can be appointed by the city manager, subject, and that is your key word, subject, to the approval by a majority vote of city council. Furthermore, and I quote again, the city attorney shall serve as the chief legal counsel and advisor to council, the city manager, and all city departments, divisions, offices, and other agencies, boards, or commissions, end quote. And my last quote, and this is under Article six point oh five Department of Law. You can all see it, you can all read it. And it says, when necessary, the council may appoint special legal counsel to represent the city together with or in place, again, that is the key point, in place of the city attorney. Also, that goes for the next thing. And in place of the city attorney, he will then take on all the duties of legal issues for the city.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I want, you know, I've got a lot of criticism, criticism because I was writing ordinances. And I really didn't want to write ordinances. I wanted an attorney here.
Right.
Unfortunately, I wasn't going to accept Attorney Roe, not counseling individual council members. And he also had a business relationship with Mr. Taylor, which he should have disclosed to us before the meeting started, before the votes were.
Are we discussing Mr. Voltoleini?
I am, I'm getting to it. So, I wanted a city attorney just as bad as our city manager wanted a city attorney. In fact, in the last meeting, he looked over at me and said, well, then find me an attorney.
Correct.
So, I talked to a guy in Palmeroy. I talked to the woman who sat here running for state representative, Wendy Schirr.
Right.
Do I think it's a wonderful person? I called her up and asked her if she would be, be willing to be the city attorney. Johnny called the Logan Law Director, who called me back when I was still present time, said she would love to do it, but she didn't think she had time. She recommended another attorney that I called, and the other attorney says, I can't give up the criminal practice. I'm my, I have a partner, we have, we have to pay our secretary, he thinks. So, in the, in this process, and I had any, even though Matt had did a traffic ticket for me two and a half years ago, I called Danny Sims, and I said, who's the name of that lawyer in Athens that represented you on this last $2,000 lawsuit or whatever? And he goes, Scott or Matt? And when he said Matt, I go, well, what's wrong with me? So, I called Matt up on the phone, I says, Matt, you have any interest in being the law director? He says, what's the tale? And I told him, you can't do criminal. And I said, call Rita and call the, call the city manager if you're interested in it, which he did. But what I want to make, the point I want to make plain is though Matt had represented me once before, while we was talking on the phone, he said, Greg, he said, if the law's against you, don't expect me not to tell you the laws, laws are against you. He said, I'm not a shrill for anybody. To the point, I know there's been a lot of controversy, a lot of talk on email, a lot of talk on Facebook. The point I'm saying, we have somebody that wants to plain just represent the city, give an honest legal opinion on everything, and, and I would say at an excellent price, one of the things we got told, well, when we called the city attorney, we're running the bill up. Well, we won't be running the bill up here because this is a straight salary. And I, I just wanted to make it plain, this is no rarer that somebody's trying to put in. Me, you, Johnny, we were all concerned with finding a city attorney. And the city manager made a point, we can't be going without a city attorney, and he's leaving for the week. It'd be a couple, three more weeks before we get another city attorney. I'm just saying, I think it's a great deal, and I, and that's why I'm supporting.
Thank you. And I will additionally say, we all looked for an attorney. I myself sent an email to the president of the Athens Bar Board, and he was kind enough to forward my email to all the attorneys that are registered in the area. And he felt that someone would contact us. Again, I also did the same thing for the county of Fairfield. And thankfully, he was also very kind to forward my email with the information of what we needed. And I have to say, I received one voicemail literally today saying that he may be interested, but he kind of wanted to talk first. So, I haven't returned his call because we had already discussed with Mr. Voltoleini that, you know, he would consider taking this job. And I'm saying that to say, we did not ask Mr. Voltoleini to take this job lightly. There was literally no one else around who wanted to deal with a mess that's here, literally. Now, when I spoke with Mr. Voltoleini on the phone for the very first time, he asked me, what are you looking for? In my words to him, the only thing I want, I said, is an ethical attorney who's going to do the right thing for the city. Did I not say that?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. And that is the only reason why Mr. Voltoleini is here and why we asked him to please consider taking this position, so that Nelsonville can finally start moving forward with whatever legal issues we have to deal with and consider.
In that regard, I asked what Mr. Voltoleini, when he'd become the city attorney, if he would look at all the ordinances that I authored and give an opinion whether they were legal or if there was a problem with it, because I'm sure if there was a problem, this council would try to go back and fix the problem. I don't like being in the position to have to do the things I had to do. I don't like it at all. And I just think it's, we just can't keep waiting, just try to find somebody else. And in that regard, I knew that we adopted ordinance sixteen fourteen.
I'll second. Can I say one thing? Yes, of course. I apologize. First, I didn't know it was controversial. That's, that's the first for me. It is so second nature to me, the idea that I would simply render legal opinions based on the law and not based on anything personal, that I find it kind of hard to believe that anyone would ever question. And I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-eight. I've never had an ethics complaint. I've never had a client fire me. And I, my approach to law is simple. When people come to lawyers, they're scared, they're worried about how much they're going to cost, they're worried about the whole system, and my job is to say, look, the system works, it's fair. You just have to let the law take its course. That's always been the way I've practiced law, is I don't take favors, I don't care. The law is what it is. Obviously, I'm an advocate. If I have a client, I'm going to advocate for my client the best way I possibly can and color the law the best way. But in a situation like this, I don't, I represent the city council, but this, it's, it's the residents of Nelsonville that are really the people who are depending on all of us. So, I want to make sure that I do what's right by the people of Nelsonville, first and foremost. Regardless of what anyone on the council may say here, or try to whisper or whatever, that doesn't enter into any. That's all I can say.
So, there was a second, if you want to call over?
Are we done with discussion? I have a question concerning?
There's a motion on the floor.
I have a question. I think the floor is still open for discussion. I would have a question on the employment agreement, if I may.
Let her read the, let her read the ordinance because it has to be introduced.
Okay.
And then we can open it back up for council.
So, then the motion is not void at this point?
The motion was to?
But we have, you haven't read the resolution or the ordinance yet, so. Read your ordinance, and then we'll have discussion. Thank you.
Somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I want to introduce.
Resolution hiring Matthew Voltoleini, attorney-at-law, as special counsel for the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio is without a city law director. Whereas Jonathan Rowe, attorney-at-law, was only authorized to act as law director for the city of Nelsonville, Ohio for the month of December, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Nelsonville City Council voted on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four not to confirm Jonathan Rowe to continue as law director. Now, therefore, we are named by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio as follows. Matthew Voltoleini, attorney-at-law, is appointed as special counsel pursuant to Article six point oh five of the Nelsonville City Charter to act in the position of Nelsonville City Law Director for a period of three months. The terms of Matthew Voltoleini's employment by the city are defined in an employment contract attached and made part of this ordinance. Matthew Voltoleini, attorney-at-law, will hold all powers and privileges of Nelsonville Law Director. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and necessary because the city of Nelsonville must have a law director immediately, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do not act by counsel on first reading under suspension of the rules this tenth day of February, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. Your question?
So, in the employment agreement under Section two, responsibilities, I would like a clarification where it says, shall be available to answer all reasonable questions for the general public at times and in a manner approved by all parties.
Correct.
We have a clarification, what that means?
That means that he will be in the office that's down the hall twice a month, all day, and he'll be available to anyone who wants or needs to have a meeting with him, to have any questions answered. He is not going to obviously follow through. It's, he's just here to give advice if someone has a question about a legal issue that they're dealing with. That is all.
Are you talking residents or?
Residents, council.
If they have a follow-up with the city.
Yeah.
Everyone.
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, they have a follow-up with the city.
Right, so everyone is allowed to come and speak to him during the two days.
About city business?
By appointment, of course.
And? So, the objection to the previous attorney was interaction with counsel individually. Did I get clarification how this will work moving forward?
Mr. Voltoleini stated that he has no problem speaking with all the council individually at any point in time. If anyone has a question, they can call him, or they can stop by his office and speak to him.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
This is not open to the public, is it?
Really? Yes, it is. I just stated that.
Oh, that's right, we have no rules of counsel right now. Go ahead.
That was not necessary, Mr. Voltoleini.
Actually, it was, we have no rules of counsel. Thank you.
Actually, do we do, because the council president can, can acknowledge anybody that she cares, she cares to acknowledge. And we usually, for like fifteen years, we always ask the public for their input, and then we go into council debate.
Correct.
And maybe, maybe we forgot right there to ask ahead of time, if there was public comment. But we've, we've done that up until Tony, we've done that.
Correct.
This also is a special meeting, not a regular council meeting. Thank you.
So, I think as president, I can have that decision to say?
You're fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Give me a name and address, please.
Daniel Sherman, three seventeen Fork Street. And I just wanted to clarify that for citizens to come in, they could be asking questions about city business and not their own personal law, law problems. But yeah, so it's just for, if they had questions about the city legal matters, they can come in and ask.
Yes, that's correct. So, I have been out speaking to folks in the public. Questions have arisen of a legal nature, of things that have happened with city and the citizen, and those were questions I could not answer because I am not an attorney. I am not legally trained to do that. And that is why Mr. Voltoleini agreed to be here two days out of the month for eight hours, to be there not only to do the work that he'll be doing for the city, but also if there's a citizen that has a question about something that has occurred or is occurring in the process, they can come and speak with him.
Madam President, I would maybe give an example. So, say somebody had people driving by their house with loudmouthers or throwing parties, or maybe they had a legal question about something that was happening to their property in relationship to the city, like?
Touring cycling.
Yeah, so they could walk in and say, this is my problem, what can we do about it? He might be able to suggest a ordinance to take care of that problem.
Correct.
Or tell them that, you know, you need to go talk to the city manager, or you need to, whatever they need to do. But it's trying to involve the public in, in decisions of the city and let the public feel like they're getting a little bit of money for their, a little bit of service for their money.
Well, and, and more to the point, I want our citizens to know that they matter, that they are important, and they are the reason that we are here. Every person that works for the city has a job because of the citizens of Nelsonville. And I think it would behoove everyone to remember that every once in a while. So, that is the main point for me. Okay.
So, your, your point, wouldn't that not be an issue for the city manager to handle?
If it was legal, if it was legal?
If it's a legal question, obviously.
So, then where, where does client attorney credibly fall in the conversation that you would have with someone?
Well, that's what I was going to point out. As, as city attorney, I couldn't discuss any pending legal matters with the city. Absolutely not. From, from a minor misdemeanor parking ticket?
That's correct.
All the way up, I couldn't discuss with anybody potential lawsuits with the city. If someone came in and said, hey, look, I want to see you guys, what are you going to do about it? I'm, I'm, I don't have the authority to even discuss that by the charter or ethically. I can't. I can't do that. I think what, what's anticipated is, my grass is too high.
Correct.
How, how high does my grass have to be? What's, what's the law on that? You know, think questions like that.
Most questions are answered by our court enforcement officer, and all questions come to the city manager. I have two steno pads full of complaints since I've been here, October second, twenty twenty-three, and none have ever needed legal advice. But when I do need legal advice, then I call the city attorney, but he decides to become a city attorney. The process that Ms. Lynn has described is correct to a point. The city manager has to appoint, and to appoint, you have to vet somebody. So, I mean, no disrespect, but I don't know him, I haven't seen any licenses, and had a chance to call up to see if he is an attorney. You can smile all you want, Mr. Sherman, but that's, that's a vetting process, okay? And, and it was, this was a very short notice. To be called just a few days ago and to start this whole process is highly irregular. But I tried to be conciliatory with the president of council, but that's not how a vetting process is done. So, I have no idea of basically who this gentleman is and what he can do for us. No disrespect. So, I mean, we don't do that. I mean, when I picked the last one, basically, I knew only three generations of the family and did a vetting process, okay? And it took me three weeks to do that. And then I made the appointment and recommendation. I feel like we're rushing through the process, this is not a good thing for the city, just to let you all know.
Madam President?
Yes.
If you're?
Gator didn't ask the city manager, tell you that he would, they recommended.
I did not say that.
Yes, you did.
I said, I was, I was, I'm being asked to.
Order! We will have order. Now, Mr. Conjerney, I personally spoke with you twice in one day.
And what did you say?
And both times, I said, will you recommend Mr. Voltoleini? And you said, yes.
I said, basically, once I've been done with my vetting process, I will send.
That is not what you said, sir. That is not what you said.
Well, I'm sorry, next time we'll have to.
You did not.
Take order? Motion to adopt.
Wow. Motion to adopt. Anybody second, second? Second motion? Thank you. Okay.
I think we have another.
Um, I'm sorry, I know you had your hand up. Go ahead, and then she'll call Rome.
Okay. My name is Haley Hollinger, I'm with W A B. I just had a question as far as costs go. What I understood, one of the main problems with Mr. Bo was that he didn't want to speak to the council members uh, that he didn't want to speak to the council members individually unless it was through the city manager due to cost reasons. Uh, that was at least to my understanding. That was part of the equation there. Um, as far as phone calls go, it's individual city council members, um, with you and Voltelini. Um, will that be an added cost for conversation with council members rather than regulating?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we will take a roll call on this ordinance. Mrs. Suspension?
Yes.
Let's come in.
On procedural only? No.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
The Bauer?
Yes. Yeah, it's a second reading, my dear.
What does what does a procedure only mean, Mr. Clement? Everything we just discussed.
Thank you.
So basically, um, because it's supposed to be, um, pass as a special ordinance or like an emergency ordinance because we needed to have an attorney. Uh, if we don't have these correct amount of votes, then it can't pass as an emergency. That means it has to go for a second reading. So we will do that at Monday's normal council, uh, meeting.
Has that meeting been announced yet?
Yeah, it's been announced by Dan Viver.
I've not received it, I've not turned over anything yet. Thank you.
Susan's been working extra hard.
Just as soon as she can. Just as soon as she can. She'll get it out to you. Um, okay, well, we have finished.
I'll make a motion to remove Gary Hunter, uh, ordinance from the table.
What?
Because it was tabled. It has to be a motion to remove it from the table.
Uh, very good. Yes, thank you.
We need a second.
Second? Yes, second. Mr. Clement?
No.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Madam President, can you have the ordinance read or introduce it?
Yes, please. An ordinance accepting Gary Hunter's legal claims against the City of Nelsonville, Ohio for one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five dollars and declaring an emergency. Whereas Gary Hunter filed lawsuits against the City of Nelsonville with claims in excess of two hundred ninety two thousand dollars. Whereas Gary Hunter responded to an offer from the City of Nelsonville with a counter offer of one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five dollars to settle all claims against the City of Nelsonville. Now, therefore, be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio as follows. Nelsonville City Council accept Gary Hunter's counter offer of one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five dollars to resolve all claims against the City of Nelsonville. City Council directs the city manager and legal council to enter into a settlement agreement with Gary Hunter to resolve all Gary Hunter's claims and lawsuits against the City of Nelsonville, Ohio for a total of one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five dollars. City Council authorizes the city manager to settle court costs in the amount of five hundred dollars. This ordinance is declared an emergency because it because it is in the best interest of the city to settle this lawsuit and claims against the city's treasury. Bill and acted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules to tenth day of February two thousand twenty four.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Is there council discussion on the ordinance?
Second.
There's no council discussion?
Not at this time.
What? Not at this time? At what time would there be if this is gonna be? Yes.
There is a reason why I said not at this time. So if you can give me a moment to do what we need to do, you will be able to speak your mind in a few minutes.
Well, maybe we should have known ahead of time.
How about we just have order? Um, go ahead and call Rome on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Sonic? Is this removing this or?
No.
Suspending a rule.
Suspending emergency. Yes.
Flowers? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, that means that we can discuss it, but it's gonna go to the second reading too.
So I will be going to the Monday's meeting for the second reading of that particular ordinance before I open it up for discussion. Again, there are some things that I feel our citizens need to be aware of. So I would like to discuss some of the lies that are being spread in our town. And yes, I did say lies. And that being regarding the fact that if we settled this particular case, the city would lose its insurance carrier. That has been said. It's also on YouTube at the Parks and Rec uh, committee meeting, which should not have been discussed there, but it was. Again, let me say this. I personally spoke with the PEP adjuster that is currently handling Mr. Hunter's case. His name is Mr. Gus Katschka. And I'm sorry, Mr. Gus, if you're watching, and I did not say that right. So my question to him was really very simple. I simply asked him if we settle Mr. Hunter's uh, suit against the city, will the city lose its insurance? His response was surprised, and he verbally said that, well, I am really surprised to hear that. He said, because he stated to me, no one claim, and again, let me repeat that. No one claim that is settled would cause the city to lose its insurance. He also stated that the insurance currently only covers legal bills. It is not gonna cover the cost of the case, period. It only covers Reminger's legal bills. That's it. So whether we settle now or we settle later, it's not gonna make any difference to the insurance company because they're not paying for it, as he very clearly stated. Now, for those of you that don't know, he also mentioned to me that our insurance was renewed on the fifth of this month. Now, the city would pay for the settlement, so there would be no reason for the city to lose the insurance simply because we settled. I then called Mr. Jim Wilburn, who owns McFadden Insurance. I spoke with him personally at length. And he stated to me that in the twenty five year history of PEP, a city's insurance had only been canceled once. And he said that was a very unique case. So, no, we don't lose our insurance simply because we do the right thing. He also stated to me that he would be very happy to speak with anyone, whether it's city employees, citizens, who would like to have that explained in detail. He also suggested, and I was very happy to hear this, that he would be more than happy to conduct a training session for anyone who would be interested in attending. I will be setting that up, and I will put a notice out so that any citizen wants to attend, they are more with than welcome to do that. He did say that it's very boring, so I'm just putting that out there. Maybe I'm saying that. And so I am gonna be setting that up in public. Uh, so anyone that wants to come in and do that can. Now, to respond to Mr. Conjemmy's comments of earlier, Mr. Voltelini is being hired by council under Special Counsel, again, which I read earlier, under Article six point oh five, and you can find that online, which says that council may appoint Special Legal Counsel to represent the city together or in place, again, in place of the city attorney. So council can hire an attorney without him being appointed by the city manager. It is in our charter, and everyone is more than welcome to go online, find it, and read it. And lastly, according to Mr. Conjemmy's contract, page one, section one, under duties, then I quote, employee being Mr. Conjemmy shall perform the duties of city manager in accordance with the directions of council, not without. And that is all I have to say on that. Yep. Sir?
Oval Lawson, eleven fifty Fourth Street, Nelsonville. You're keen to point out five oh four, but why don't you point out five oh five, which recommends how the council conducts its business with the city manager?
It's six oh five.
Five oh five oh four gives the duties to the city manager. Five oh five gives how the council should react with the city manager, which council law, in my viewpoint, has not been thought about tolerating.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
Section five oh five of the charter says that no council member shall direct the city manager in the hiring or or firing of an employee. Mr. Voltelini is not an employee. He would be an officer. In other words, I can't walk up and say, I don't like that cop you go firing. That's a violation of the charter.
Correct.
But but doing the legal duties of council that are that is outlined in the charter is not a violation of five oh five.
Thank you. That is all I have for this evening, uh, the other ordinances.
Don't worry, my miss wants to talk. Yeah. Yeah, so we're still under discussion, correct? With this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so second reading will be Monday night.
That's correct.
Will there be an executive session to discuss this situation?
Um, I believe
If the members vote for a negative concession.
I believe in the email that you all have sent, you, someone stated that the Reminger attorneys would be here to answer any questions. Is that correct?
So there will be a special session to discuss it?
No, I didn't say that. I just simply said.
So I'm asking, will there be one?
Well, that depends on the vote on that day. I can't say right now whether there will be or not.
There has to be a vote. You go to the executive session. Every council member gets that out.
Exactly. So on that day, we will vote, and if the vote says we go to executive session, then we will.
Correct. So we we may or may not pick the vice or a city attorney.
We are gonna listen, ask questions, understand, and then make a decision.
In the executive session.
Uh, I don't know that.
We can't do it out here.
Why not?
Because it's a legal matter.
That's a good question. Can I answer the question, sir? That's a very good question.
Madam President, can I speak on this issue?
Yes, please.
Uh, Gary Hunter goes back to the nineteen eighties. When I was a police officer in the nineteen eighties, Gary Hunter was assisting the city. Sometimes, well, how I assisted the city at that time, Mike Nolan was the law director, and they had Gary Hunter do all the legal contracts. And after that, I think for twenty three of my twenty five years on council, well, maybe take maybe say twenty twenty one, twenty two, Gary Hunter was a long time law director and served honorably. And so he put a bill in to the city for two hundred sixty eight thousand dollars, and these figures are very important.
Should we be discussing this in the next session?
Why not?
I'm just asking.
It's not a good idea, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Well.
I have a disclaimer. Thank you.
Yeah, I want
We are gonna discuss.
This is all about it. This is all public record. Madam President, I'd like the floor. I can. This is all public record. It's up and down disclosed. It's not public record.
Okay, you have the floor.
All right, um, so out of two hundred sixty eight thousand dollars, Taylor Saptin sent us an email saying he double billed for six items. In those six items, if we took the original billing and the double billing out, that comes to fifteen thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty five dollars. So if you take the fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars away from the original bill of two seventy eight, that comes to two hundred fifty two. Now, all the time that that Mr. Hunter was employed, he was entitled to P E R S. That would add another forty thousand dollars to two fifty two, so we come up with two hundred ninety two dollars. Two hundred ninety two thousand dollars is the total that was involved in the lawsuit. So Mr. Hunter made an offer of one hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five, which cut uh, about one hundred sixty thousand dollars off his bill. We all thought it was a great deal. The city manager even told us it was a good deal. We come out here and voted seven and up until to accept it because motions don't have the same force as ordinances. We put in a motion that we accept the offer and directed the city manager and the and the attorneys to settle the case. I think we can look at this two ways. We could try to come up with a fair amount that we pay a long time employee. And I can't imagine there was a hundred sixty thousand dollars worth of bill there. Yeah, I'm not saying he didn't put this here or put that there or double bill something or make a mistake. Stuff like that happens. But instead of sitting down with Gary and going over that bill and saying, well, look here, look here, and look here, and and trying to settle it as, you know, people in Nelsonville usually try to do. We try to treat each other with respect and come to some kind of agreement. Well, that didn't happen, and I I I'm it's beyond me why that never happened, especially the long term service that Gary had as city attorney. Also known as one of the best municipal attorneys in the state of Ohio, and he is the legal director for the municipal league. And I think every clerk that was here really liked the way that Gary took care of the clerks and got to got to work to them and everything. I'm just sitting here going, here we are, we're all in a meeting. Everybody thought it was a great deal. And then as soon as we passed, we put out the ordinance to say the exact thing, we had lawyers that are getting a whole lot of money to fight a case that is going to go to the PPP insurance company and run their bill up. So when you start talking about paying things, every time a big legal bill goes to the insurance payer, that gets spread with the people in the PPP. And I just think this is a this is a very fair offer. I think that we should be interested in being fair instead of just trying to win, and again, another lie that was told is directly after you knocked down the or the the lie was knocked down about we're gonna lose our insurance. Well, the next lie come out is all it's gonna cost it. It's gonna cause our insurance to go up. And the only thing that could possibly cause our insurance to go up is to submit a whole bunch of legal bills because you want to keep fighting and and billing the PPP for legal matters. It it's our decision as a council whether we want this to come up with a fair number and settle with Gary Hunter's. The insurance company has the the insurance lawyers has no decision on that. And I want to make one more thing perfectly clear. They made an offer to Gary Hunter for twenty five thousand dollars. And no time did they walk into this council and and in my opinion, twenty five thousand dollars for two and a half years of work, plus all the work on the sewer plant was nothing but a direct insult. But they didn't walk into Nelsonville Council, ask for executive station and say, do we have permission to make an offer for twenty five thousand dollars? They did it on their own to solve him and to cause more trouble. And I believe if I read the canons of the High Spring Court, you cannot make an offer to to somebody without first discussing it with your client. So far as I'm concerned, I'm tired of it. I just want to come up with a fair number for Gary. Settle this lawsuit and move on as human beings, and I think this number is fair.
I agree.
Madam President?
Yes?
So I got Daniel Sherman, three seventeen Fork Street. I got a question for you. It's, uh, who hired Reminger? Is there an ordinance number for that? Because Reminger's special counsel to handle this lawsuit, I don't think Is there an ordinance number for that? Because Reminger's special counsel to handle this lawsuit, I don't think there was ever an ordinance to hire them.
Um, I believe in speaking with the folks with the insurance, they have different attorneys that they can appoint for different cases. And I believe they were appointed. I don't know if they called and spoke to us here at the time and said, hey, we are looking to appoint these people. Are you guys okay with that or not? That I do not know. I know they appoint folks to take care of all the different cases that, um, require.
Well, I, I know any, any claims we had seen before, attorneys had to be appointed by council.
Okay.
So I just, I don't think that happened.
Okay.
And, you know, we had to pay our $10,000 deductible for the insurance company. We didn't kick in. So the longer that goes on, and it gets up 10 grand, we're gonna be on the foot for that as well.
Correct. Now, uh, one thing that they did say, uh, Mr. Wilburn did say was that it is not up to the attorneys to decide if the city wants to settle this case. Their job is to draw the paperwork if we, as a city council, decide, hey, we accepted the offer already. I think it's good. We're ready to move forward. It's not up to them to make that decision.
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Well, that's all we have for tonight. The other ordinances that we were.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
I'm still speaking.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you just wasn't around.
The other ordinances that we had initially thought we would go ahead and do a second reading on, we're moving into Monday because I believe, um, when the notice was put online, I think these might have been left off, so just to be, uh, clear on everything, we'll just move them to Monday, and we'll do them during the regular council meeting.
Which is whether it, it says the second reading would be on 212, not 210, on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you have a question?
Uh, yes, no. Um, I was curious. There was an ordinance to codify the removal of Mr. Voe on, uh, this past Monday.
Correct.
Is that gonna affect in any way, shape, or form the hiring of a new law official?
No. No, because, uh, Mr. Voe, we council had voted on his removal before we even spoke with him, so.
The other thing that it'll do is we put in that ordinance that he will be paid after January 22nd.
Because that was the day that we voted.
So on the second reading of that passes, it'll, it'll prevent the auditor from paying him any, for any work past January 22nd. So that, so that's the reason for, and to explain it. Or, uh, motions don't have the effect of law. You either have to do a resolution or ordinance for council to actually speak as for law. So that's, that's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Did you have comments?
Nope, finished it. I said it throughout the meeting. Um, okay.
All right.
Go ahead, let's go. Yeah.
I'm leaving. Turn it.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Has she come in?
Yeah.
Ms. Nguyen? Yes.
Oh, my gosh, she's been.
I'm gonna cut you off.
I know. You are sorry.
You're not cut off.
Still on.
Oh, okay. All right, there you go.
Okay, we are adjourned, and thank you so very much for coming and being a part of us.
Thank you.